I'd like to call the meeting for, what's today, June 12th, 2017 to order. Would you please have a roll?
Mrs. Tastic?
Here.
Dr. Davidson of yours?
Here.
Mrs. Jackson? Mr. Shaw?
Here.
Mr. Walter?
Here.
Mr. Adelman?
Here.
Mrs. Ross?
Here.
Thank you. Would you join me in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the physical with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Are there any announcements?
I have one. What is your child reading this summer? Have you made reading part of your child's daily routine? Reading during the summer makes a huge difference in a student's academic progress. Research proves that children who don't read during the summer can lose up to three months of reading progress, and that loss has a cumulative, long-term effect. Peoria Public Schools wants to encourage all of our students to stay on the right course this summer. Dr. Karat and her team have developed the Remarkable Readers' Raffle to motivate students to read this summer. Here's how it works. Every Peoria Public Schools student incoming to K-8 tracks his or her reading during the summer weeks. Each student who successfully reads a minimum of 30 minutes four times each week will have the opportunity to be submitted to the Remarkable Readers' Raffle. Students must record the title of the book and a brief note of the reading. Students must read all 11 weeks and successfully complete the tracking document to be submitted into the raffle. Students should submit the tracking document to their teacher by the first week of the 2017-2018 school year, and winners will be drawn at the district office and awarded prizes at a September Board of Education meeting. Businesses and organizations, we are also looking for help with prizes. Call (672) 6536 to find out how you can support this important effort. Just a reminder, students who read a minimum of 1,320 minutes or 22 hours over the whole summer will be entered in the raffle to start a new school year, and a winner will be drawn at each grade level.
Thank you. Other announcements? Mr. Shaw?
Thank you. If you have a student entering kindergarten, sixth, ninth, or 12th grades, or have a student new to the district, now is the time to make appointments to see the doctor for physicals and immunizations, as well as dentist and eye doctor appointments. Peoria Public Schools requires first-day compliance with physicals and immunizations, and our school nurses are busy at work making sure our families know what is needed. Our back-to-school packets will be mailed out the first week of July, and we will again host registration hubs to help our families receive the required services. However, the sooner our students can be vaccinated and receive their physical, the easier the back-to-school process will be. Visit peoriapublicschools.org/ enrollment to find out all of our back-to-school information, including our hub dates, which will be Tuesday, July 25th, and Thursday, July 27th, as well as Wednesday, August 2nd, from 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. at Gleno, Richwoods, Peoria High, and Manuel. We will also be open at those locations on Saturday, August 5th, from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. We'll also have many services available at Backpack Peoria on Saturday, July 29th, from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at the Dream Center. And again, all this information can be found at peoriapublicschools.org/ enrollment. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Walter?
Just a reminder that the Peoria Public Schools Foundation golf outing is scheduled for Monday, June 26th, at the Country Club of Peoria. Golfers will start with a lunch at the clubhouse at 11:30, a putting contest at 12:30, and a shotgun start at 12:45. A special reception will begin at 5:15 with dinner and awards at 6:00 p.m. This event is the foundation's largest fundraiser each year, and not only is it a fun afternoon of golf, but also features a large silent auction and raffle at the reception. If you would like more information about the event or how to donate, call the foundation office at (309) 713-3608.
Thank you. Other announcements? Dr. Bob, you have an announcement?
Nope.
No? Okay. I have one from the board members. We want to let the public know that our annual Board of Education reorganization meeting, usually held at the 1st of July, has been rescheduled for Friday, June 30th at 5:00. That would be also on our website. Our next regular scheduled meeting would be July 17th at 6:30 our regular time. Okay, so, community contributions. Tonight, our community contribution recognition goes to Manuel High School Alumni Association. The organization was a big part of Manuel's centennial celebration in 2009 and continues to fundraise and award scholarships to graduating students. Alumni Association President Ronnie Lee is here along with other members of the association. I will ask Mr. Lee to come to the podium now. Is Mr. Lee here?
Yes.
Hello, Ronnie, how are you?
Good.
And would you introduce the other guests and tell us a little bit about the current status of the Alumni Association?
Thank you for the recognition. We do have our members here tonight. We have Erica Harns, Erica Henley, Max Shelton, Mary White, Dominique Lee, Cynthia Fortune, Suzie Hanley, and Carmen Harms. And all these people are very valued members of our board that makes the things take place and make them possible. We had the opportunity, since we've been in the last 10 years, I say in the last 10 years, to give out over 200 scholarships at an average of $2,000 each. That's all due to the contributions that the alums have given us and everything, and the hard work. We have about 8,800 mailing lists that we go out each year trying to get those funds, as well as get people to come to our banquet. So, it's an endeavor that all these people are a part of, and without them it would not happen, because the mailing list is a very important thing. We're trying to reach out and get those individuals that have gone on and be successful to come back to Manuel and show that Manuel is still in existence and still doing well. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Lee? Mr. Lee, on behalf of the Board of Education, Dr. Karat has a small token of our appreciation to present to you, and thank you for keeping the legacy of Manuel High School alive with your commitment and continued support.
That's right. Actually, they held Manuel Academy alumni.
Get to the mic so we can hear.
Yep. Manuel alumni, the group. Actually, I was with them Saturday night. I know there's so many things happening this weekend, as was the cotillion on Sunday, but we had a great time. You recognize about, I think, nine or 10 students? Oh, 16, 16 students from Manuel. They asked me to give the welcome statements or the welcome comments at the banquet. Bernice Gordon Young was the speaker. Ms. Sharon, you would love that, one of your favorite individuals. She did a great job.
Yes, she did.
But I just wanted to thank you. As a principal at Manuel, we worked very closely together. You were very, very supportive, worked hard for the kids. I love, they do something at their banquet, a roll call, and I think they had students going way back, was it 1940? 1945? And that was very endearing and very touching. But great banquet, great, great, great event. Ms. White, Ms. Mary?
This is the first year Helen Opera Lee attends every year. She graduated in 1934. She was 100 years old, but she had to be at her granddaughter's wedding, and she still calls.
Oh, wow. We all want to be like her.
Yes.
Yes. But the Manuel team, Manuel family, we love you. Thank you. Thank you for your commitment, and we talked about Manuel, Manuel being known as a place of excellence. Ms. Zee, you were not able to attend. Can you please stand, Ms. Zee? And these are the people that, they're amazing people. This is the new principal of Manuel Academy, so I'm sure you're going to have lots of meetings and lots of conversations. So, again, thank you, Mr. Lee. You're doing a great job as president of the Alumni Association, so thank you very much.
Thank you. And Dr. Karat, you're up next for the Most Improved Attendance.
Oh, okay. My notes Sunday, but I think I remember. So, this is our final celebration, our final announcement. This is an activity we've tracked for the last, thank you, Chris, every month, and a little competition going on amongst the schools, the 27 buildings, and so this is the last attendance check-in. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Redberg. And so, third place, let's see, third place is Franklin. Do we have anybody from Franklin? Dr. Bond and her team. Come on, team. Did you know you increased by 2.14%?
Wow.
And so, yeah, you made it in the 90s.
We did.
92. I rounded it off from 91.9. I gave you that extra.
Thank you.
100, yes, yes. Thank you so much. So, this is your opportunity to maybe talk about your plans for the upcoming year and maybe lessons learned. Again, congratulations, and you have a beautiful team also.
Oh, thank you. I think so too.
Dr. Bond, everybody, principal of Franklin Middle School.
Primary school. Hi, yeah, we learned a lot this year with attendance. We really took a lot of time to develop a really thorough plan and follow it as best as we could with everything else going on. So, I think for us, one thing that we learned is to not only celebrate and honor those students and their families who have, you know, perfect attendance and that kind of thing, but also people like us, like we finally made Most Improved, so making sure we acknowledge and recognize those who are, you know, making improvement in their attendance goals at our school. So, that's something that we want to focus on for the future. Yes. So, I have with me Linda Han. She's my interventionist and has taken on a real, she's real excited. How about that? She's very excited about our attendance plan. Mrs. Woods, she is one of my special education teachers. This is our granddaughter Laney, and she goes to Franklin, so she's one of our kiddos. Come on up. And then, this is Mr. Johnson, and he too is very excited, as you can tell, about our attendance plan, and he is through Family Core and works so, so closely with us, and so they're here to celebrate as well.
Great.
Thank you.
Good luck next year. Let's see if we can do 93, 94. Our district goal is actually 95. That'd be amazing if, I think you can do it. Perfect. Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Bond and your team. And in second place is Manuel Academy, Mrs. Elizabeth Zalkowski and her daughter. They're here to accept the, not really an award, but the recognition, and you went, you increased by 2.75%. We sort of kind of hung out in the 80s this entire year, so the challenge for next year, the 17, 18 school year, will be to push over to the 90s. And I know you are, and you're working very hard with your team, and so can you share a few remarks in terms of ideas? I know you're transitioning from charter. You can just say thank you and thank the team. It's up to you, Ms. Zee.
I think I am.
I love her.
Whatever they've been doing, we will take that and move on and kind of capitalize on whatever has been working and then push forward, and I do hope for that 90, 90%. I really, we'll get there.
I know you will.
Thank you.
Thank you. And last but not least, our highest increase in attendance, Valeska Hinton. I see Principal Powers and her team. Come on down. Team, amazing. 5.21%, which gets you over to 91.1%. So, that's amazing. How did you guys do that? And what are your plans for the upcoming school year? Principal Powers.
We took the approach most recently to meet with parents individually, and really developing the attendance plan that met their needs and really ensuring that they understood the importance, especially here as we ended the year. You know, we're year-round, so we started planning for next year. Ms. Strickland, this is Brittany Strickland. She's our family facilitator. She's wonderful. She met with every new parent. We have 200, over 200 students that'll be starting in July. She met individually with each one of those parents and went over our attendance policy, expressed the importance of being there every day, to call if you're sick, but building that routine in young three- and four-year-olds is so important. So, that's what we're attributing most of our success to this last month, and then hopefully into July. So, thank you so much.
Thank you. You have the bragging rights also. Your banner, Most Improved for the month of May. Congratulations.
Ms. Ross? Is there a discipline update?
Ms. Marlin?
Ms. Marlin, are you here?
Oh, there she is.
Do you have a presentation up here?
Good evening, President Ross, members of the board, Dr. Karat.
Good evening.
Thanks for giving me the opportunity to give an update on the discipline that occurred throughout the 2016-17 school year. So, first, what I have done, this is actually all, this is all the referrals for the entire school year, and you'll see on the next slide, I just pulled out the top five. And so, really, with the top five referrals, they have been the same five major referrals for the last three years, and they have been anywhere from 70 to 75% of all major referrals in our school district have been due to the disruptions, disobedient to authority, which would be considered insubordination, not attending classes. Not attending classes has been third for the last three years, aggressive acts, and then cell phones or electronics. And as you can see here with the trend, they have continued to remain the same, and like I said, these five major referral categories have been the same five for the last three years. Okay, so, members of the board had asked to see our statistics for the aggressive acts, fighting, or the battery to staff. Those major referrals reported to the ISBE, and so what I wanted to show you here is, here's what we know, that the, whoa.
It's Ms. McAmen.
It's been a while. Right? It's like, wow. That was a quick way to get through. Okay, so, we are on track. As you can see here, the aggression against staff, aggressive acts, fights, we're on the right track. We're doing what we need to do. It's just maybe one aggressive act have come down, but fighting has gone up, and so what we are putting in place for the 2017-18 school year is I will be doing onsite training for all principals, assistant principals, teachers, to ensure the consistency across the district, so an aggressive act that's written up at one school will look or sound the same as an aggressive act at another school. We have to get the consistency. So, we will continue to see the trend of these numbers coming down. Okay, and here, the physical, battery to school personnel, or alcohol, drugs, these have continued to come down since the 2014-15 school year, and like I said, we do just need to work on that consistency piece, which will be covered in the training for all personnel. Okay, so, once again, this is our campus safety officers documented involvement in reports. I went ahead and highlighted the top five, and these are the reports that our campus safety officers have written throughout the 2016-17 school year. So, the top one being battery, second is intervention, third would be disorderly conduct, other investigation, and then lastly, we do have reports being written for disruption. Okay, so, as you can see, the number of days suspended, we have actually, since Dr. Karat's tenure, we have dropped 6,000 days that our students have spent out of school due to out-of-school suspension. We also, we're seeing the number of students and the number of suspensions going down, but like I said, this training has to ensure that for these students getting suspended due to, you know, Senate Bill 100, that we are following everything that we need to follow, and the main thing with Senate Bill 100 is we have to be documenting those interventions and supports to ensure that, well, one, consistency across all schools, but to ensure that all interventions and supports have been exhausted before an exclusionary out-of-school suspension can be used. Okay, this, actually, what this is showing you, this would be the number of individual students who were suspended. So, the first one would be one time, then you've got the kids who have been suspended two times throughout the year, three times, and so forth. What I can tell you about this chart is that all students suspended three or more times, they only make up 5% of our student population. So, what's crucial is, is one, the training, and also that interventions and supports are being used the way they're intended to be used, and those SEL services for those 5% of the kids who continue to cause the major disruptions and get put out of school, we've got to ensure the SEL supports are in place for those students, and we'll continue to see the decline. And this would be the 2016-17 school board's student discipline actions, and as you can see, all categories have basically declined. You know, our expulsion with the bans has actually gone from 179 to 46, and what I can tell you is that for the 2014-15 and 15-16 school years, those also included those discipline referrals. It was due to discipline, and the ones this year were all due to drugs or alcohol. And then the expulsions, as you can tell, 119 to 38, and so forth. So, that is the discipline update. Did anyone have any questions or need clarification on slides?
Mr. Walter?
Yeah, I had some questions about, do you have another category for bullying? We've had some incidents this year, and I just wondered if you could address that.
The bullying, like if they've gone up or gone down?
Yeah.
We actually see, we used to have bullying and harassment together.
Okay.
And now, we actually have it divided into six different categories, because we have to know to report it to the state if it's bullying due to race, nationality, sexuality. We have to have it divided up.
Okay.
So, no, we don't have, I can tell you, the bullying has not gone up in the last two years, though.
That's what I was getting to. I just wanted to see if the trend was.
Yeah, the trend, the bullying has gone down.
I have a question. Oh, you want to go?
So, Ms. Marlin, since this was the first year that we implemented Senate Bill 100, do you have a sense of what the dampening effect of implementing that policy was on, in terms of our suspensions and expulsions?
I think with Senate Bill 100, it actually holds us all accountable. There are requirements we must meet, and really, what we determined is we are doing a lot of what Senate Bill 100 required us to do. What we were not doing is we were not documenting all the interventions and supports that were put in place. That's the key piece, and we have to ensure before putting a student out of school that all interventions and supports have been exhausted before going to that exclusionary discipline.
Okay. Hi, thanks. Boy, there's a ton of stuff up there. Some, just some questions for clarification. Could you go to your first slide that says aggressive acts and fighting?
No.
Yeah, that's the one I want.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, because it's kind of faded out on mine, so I just wanted to see that again.
Well, how do you get it?
Just hit the, sorry, Chris.
Okay.
So, what we're seeing here is that aggressive acts against staff have not changed over three years. Aggressive actions have not changed over two years. And when I say they haven't changed, I mean, that's not statistically a significant number. They're very close.
Right, correct.
So, however, we have seen an increase in physical activity and fighting over the last three years. Is that, would that be correct?
That is correct, but what I have to preface is, we have, it's, a lot of it is due to training, because staff are unsure of the correct definitions of, say, like, an aggressive action. Or a push at one school might be written up as aggressive action, but a push at another school might be written up as a fight. So, that training is crucial, and it will be in all schools this school year. We have to get the consistency.
So, this data, would it be fair to say that this data would be heuristic? It sort of points the way for us. It gives us a general overall view, but in point of fact, is, would it be fair to say because there might be differences in how each school defines a certain act, that we may be seeing more or less of what's actually there?
Absolutely, and we do have definitions for each major or minor behavior, and those are the definitions that we have to teach and make sure all schools are teaching them correctly, and the only way to do that is to have it done by one person.
Okay, and if we could go to, let's see, you had a, sorry. There was a slide on, that was physical battery in school, alcohol, drugs, knife, box cutter, razor.
Right here.
Battery to, oh, battery to staff. Okay, there it is. I see that. And so, so under physical battery, it's kind of a mixed bag, but we did go down significantly. And so, another way to look at that is that staff might be safer.
Well, correct, but I can tell you that I get all suspensions in this school district, and there are many that I have to email the principal and say, this was not battery. It was, you know, like a staff got in a doorway and a student pushed their way through. No one was hurt. Now, is it aggressive act against staff? Absolutely. Is it battery to school personnel? No, it is not. Because what we have to realize is that if there's aggravated battery to school personnel, we are putting a class-three felony on that student, on that student's record. And, you know, so we have to make sure that everyone's doing it the same way.
I understand. And finally, if we look at number of suspensions. And finally, if we look at number of suspensions. Mine, again, mine is faded out, so I can, here we go. All right. So, and again, and this, would this be related to what Mr. Adler said earlier? Might it be a combination of, again, training staff and making sure? But if we have number of suspensions down, but on the other hand, we have certain areas of mischief that have gone up. So, on the one hand, kids are acting out, but on the other hand, our suspensions are down.
But-
And you don't suspend for every acting out. I get that.
Absolutely.
I get that. But those two things, wouldn't they want to go in the same direction?
Well, what I can tell you is that our in-schools, schools have to use other, like, to keep a student in school, we have to use, see more detentions, teacher conferences, parent conferences, in-school suspensions, and those have gone up this year.
Okay. So, there's sort of an untold story behind this of interventions.
Absolutely.
Okay. That's what I want to know. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we have a public hearing. I'm sorry? So, anything, any other questions or next presentation we'll come back to in just a few minutes? Okay? I'd like to open the budget hearing of the amended budget. Do we need a motion to go into that?
Second?
Do you follow the roll, please?
Mrs. Castor. Hi. Dr. Davis, Senator Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Shaw?
Aye.
Mr. Walter?
Aye.
Mr. Adler?
Aye.
Mrs. Ross?
Aye.
Is there any audience participation on the budget hearing?
Yes. Terry Knapp, 922 West Wilshire Drive, Peoria. I hate to be a Monday morning quarterback, and I've talked about this before, but I wondered to myself, what would the district would be like, especially on the north side, had Glen Oak School not been closed, White School, Kingman School, Greeley School, Longfellow School, Irving School, the six schools replaced by Glen Oak and Lincoln, at an overfill capacity. I know when, I can remember the article on Glen Oak being, that was built for 600 and going to be a community center, and it was never used as a community center. The rooms were simply crowded with students, almost eight, 900 kids now at Glen Oak, not a healthy environment. Woodruff was closed with 900 students, and many young people were sent to Manuel and Central, which didn't work out. They weren't accepted. People would like to think that they were, but I can tell you many stories where they weren't. The cost of busing, and this is the budgetary thing, the cost of busing is outrageous. What you did to the north side, especially the Everville-Kingman area, you simply bust all those kids all over town. They used to walk to Woodruff. They were within a mile, to a mile and a half from Woodruff, and walked to Woodruff. They enjoyed that. It was, if you read the articles written about people walking to school, it's a healthy thing. Busing is not healthy. Busing presents discipline problems. If you read anything about busing, busing increases discipline problems. And not only the students bring it into the building, but they take it home to their neighborhoods when school gets out. Again, the gang crossover between Woodruff, Central, and Manuel was significant, like it or not. If you do the research, you'll find that out. My question to you is, have you done the research? Have you followed these children? Have you followed the busing? The cost of the busing has surely increased dramatically. The state has lessened their contribution to busing, and you have simply absorbed that. You are losing money by the situation. Hopefully, you'll have a long-range plan to do something for the north side and rectify the situation. Thank you.
Jeff Atkins-Dutrow with the Peoria Federation of Teachers, and sent all of you an email today. And it does kind of figure in with the budget. And just want to make sure that the budget is aligning with, number one, in the strategic plan, which deals with creating innovative spaces in which students can learn. And a lot of what I heard at the last meeting dealt with, we can fit this number of students into a school building, and we can make it work, but it's almost as though the minimum possible is being done for the students. Like, watch, we can put 900 kids in here, we can make it a go. Is that the most innovative way to go about assigning our students to school buildings? Is it the most effective use of Glen Oak and the other schools in our district? At the last meeting, I believe it was Mrs. Jackson, who asked the superintendent and the administration to come back with some updates regarding Glen Oak specifically, and we look forward to hearing those tonight. Thank you.
Any other comments on the budget hearing from the public? I see none. The budget hearing closed. And we will resume with our presentation, the amended budget overview. Mike McKenzie, Mr. McKenzie?
We need to close out the budget and go into open session.
Okay. Give me a motion, please.
I moved that we-
You're not, you were not in a closed session.
Oh, you don't have to. Okay.
Okay. I didn't think so. So, we're in an open session.
Tap of the gavel.
Right. Okay. Awesome. Thanks.
All right. Good evening, everybody. We just have a short little presentation here about the budget amendment, just to remind everybody exactly what we're doing tonight. As we went over last month, but just to remind everybody, the, to amend a budget is set forth in, you know, Illinois law, and so, we have to go through this whole process to officially do a budget for a school district. So, the week of, of May 8th, actually, on the 12th, we did a public notice in the legal section of the Journal Star. It actually looked like this. This is the wording. It's just very much a boilerplate wording of what the, that it's available, and how to get it, and where to get it. We also put it on display, both here at the district, on the front counter of the receptionist, there's been a packet like this that's, is the printed-out version of the budget. Occasionally, it disappears, but this month, it pretty much has stayed there. But I check periodically to make sure it's still there, and then, if it disappears, I print a new one. But it is also available on our website. Just to remind people how you get there, if you go to peoripublicschools.org, you go to the About Us section, and then, the Finances section, I have it highlighted there on the left-hand side, and then, you'll come to this page, which we go above and beyond with what we put out on financial reports. We put, we have a number of years of budgets, we have a number of years of salary reports, but it's all out in this one section of the Finances webpage. And I have the arrow pointing to the Amendment 1 of the current-year budget. So, if you click on that, you get the PDF version of the budget. The first page is just a summary that I create, and then, the rest of the pages are the state version of the budget. So, that is where it is, out on the website. Tonight, we officially had the public hearing, giving people an opportunity to speak about any issues they want to about the budget. And then, later tonight, there is a resolution on the agenda to officially adopt the amended budget. So, that's later tonight. Total revenues for the year across all funds is $250,882,198. Total expenditures, $227,933,134. The amended budget has total revenues over total expenditures because we issued the $29 million of capital improvement bonds that'll be paid for the, with the county school facility sales tax over the next 20 years. So, if you have any specific questions, be happy to answer any.
Anyone have any questions? Question?
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. The summer school update. Is Ms. Jenkins or Dr. Jenkins or Ms. Susan Gerson, or both?
We're both here.
Oh, and Mr. Booth. I can see your name there. Come on down.
Thank you, President Ross. Thank you, board. Dr. Karat, we just wanted to give you an update. We've now finished the first five days of our K-8 program, and our high school program's in about day nine, I believe, or actually, seven. So, we wanted to give you some updates on that. Right around with our total numbers, including with Mr. Booth's numbers, we have about 615 students in our program. We have students continually being called from the waitlist, and we're now shifting some students from one region to another to fill all the schools. And so, we're pretty pleased with how that's going, and we're currently getting our field trips set up now and our extra activities. So, we have robotics starting, we have coding clubs starting, we're looking at a Halt field trip for some of our students, and doing some of our local attractions for the kids. So, we have some exciting stuff planned for the full-day program. The academic program is a balance of literacy activities in the morning, reading and writing, and doing some math, problem-solving specifically. And then, the afternoon, which I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Jenkins, kind of gets their hearts pumping in a different way.
In a different way. Good evening. Good evening. And as Susan said, we do have the afternoon programs, and part of the afternoon is not only just for fitness and sports, it's also for, we do the music, we do the arts, we get the arts included in there, so we have some arts, we have some dance. We also have arts and crafts so that they can do some things. We also bought games for them to be able to do some board games and keep that mind moving in the right direction. And so, we have field trips for the field experiences, such places as the Halt Center, the Children's Museum, trying to do some other activities such as golf, things that they wouldn't usually do. So, activities as golf and soccer and things that students would get a chance to, some of our students are already involved in that, and others, we're going into the schools and seeing who would be interested in adding to our students already that are involved. But sometimes, at a younger age, they haven't been introduced to that as well. So, we're starting at the fifth grade to introduce some of those activities for them to be involved with. We also have the Center for Prevention of Abuse on board, helping us with Healthy Heroes in K-1, 2, some robotics. So, just a lot of different things to help keep the mind stimulated. They get the academics, they get the recreation, and still keep it in that domain of learning. And so, I'll let-
I also forgot to share that we have some of our high school students who are aspiring educators going through, and they're in summer school as well, so that they're learning what it's like to be a teacher. So, that's pretty exciting. And then, we have ISU's Administrative Cohort Class. They're coming in and doing practice walkthroughs and practice teacher observations. So, we have quite a bit happening there with our ISU partnership, too.
And we're also working with the schools to do student volunteers. So, we have probably about 20 to 30 volunteers of students going into the various sites to be able to help support the activities that are happening. And those are students that need their volunteer hours so they can get, you know, 20 to 50 hours of volunteerism. So, that also helps support, put some students that are closer to the students that are attending summer school to put some of those students close at hand. And I'll let Derek tell about his program, then come back and tell about our community connections.
Sure. Good evening, everyone. Today was the first day of the Winning Program. And just to remind you, Winning is for our rising ninth graders, and Winning stands for what I need now in ninth grade. We have 37 students signed up for the program today as the first day. We had 17 in attendance. We have several students, a handful of students that are currently on vacation, which we have a slot for them when they return, and we're working out some transportation issues with another handful of students. But today was a great first day, a great, a day of orientation to share with them about the program. We have a lot of field trips that have already been confirmed and scheduled, field trips such as the Advanced Medical Transport, Midwest Technical Institute, WNBD Radio Studios, and New Studio, Caterpillar Tech Center. All of the local trades, our steam fitters, our operators, our electricians, and carpenters will tour those facilities, a tour of ICC College, the Peoria Police Department, Excel Foundry, Peoria City Hall Government, where they'll have speakers, the local city councilman and mayor, speak to them in the city council chambers. Field trips that we have pending, just aligning our dates and times with our calendars, Bradley University, Eureka College, and then, the courthouse with judges and lawyers, where we're trying to schedule a time where they'll be able to experience a mock trial. And then, Methodist College of Nursing. We have speakers coming in, but working out the date and time for tours. Again, the three components of Winning is to teach them social-emotional skills, and then, provide them exposure to college and careers to assist them with finding their niche. And then, the third component is finding them mentors. And lastly, what the Winning Program is doing is trying to provide wraparound services for their parents as well. United Way, we did a training on June 5th, and we have another training on June 19th. This training is Healthy Minds, Healthy Neighborhoods, which basically teaches me what to do with my teenager. And we had over 20 mentors and parents attend that training, and we have a follow-up training on the 19th as well, where we expect that number to double, because we're having more contact with the families now that the students are in session. So, we have a lot of individuals playing. Again, this was a partnership. We have Peoria Police Department who was on staff today, who sent an officer and also three cadets to assist with staffing, not as a security role, but just as a support role and build relationships. So, it's a lot going on to introduce our students to high school.
And then, the last piece that I wanted to mention to you, I worked very closely with Mark Streamer when we're working together to put the community meals plan together. And Mark is here in the audience, I do believe I saw him come in. You have in your packets a food fun, Food Friends and Fun, and it sort of gives you an overview of the city, of where we are working with our community agencies that are having summer programs. So, not only does Peoria Public Schools do a summer program, but we have many agencies within the city that do programs as well, and we recognize that those are still our students in many of those programs. And so, it's very important to us that we get those meals out to our students. And so, SEDEXO works very closely. We work with all the agencies that you can see listed on your map that show some of the agencies that are having programs, and they also get breakfast and lunch through the meals program in the summer. And we think that's serving quite a few, so, we know it's serving quite a few of our students that might not necessarily be coming to our summer school here at the district, but they're definitely going to some of those programs in the community. So, they're still getting those meals as they attend those programs. And you can see those listed there for your proposal. Any, that's all we have.
Questions? Dr. Pop? Go ahead, Ms. Castor.
Thank you. You had indicated, I believe, that there is, there are 615 students that are involved in the summer program. And the summer program is at Glen Oak, Harrison, and-
Thomas Jefferson, Anne Knoxville Center, and Peoria High.
Okay. Can you kind of give me a breakdown of the, of the number of students at each location?
Sure. We have about 186 students at Glen Oak. That includes our English Language Learners Program. Harrison reported 107 today. Thomas Jefferson has 124 plus our special education program, which was right around 80, 85, Maureen? Okay. And then, Knoxville Center reported around 100 students for their program.
Okay. My next question would be, because there's, there were quite a few parents that kind of said, well, I wasn't able to get my child in. These numbers that you have just indicated to me, how close are they to the capacity of children that they were able to accept?
Sure. Well, we're not close. That's why we're still calling off the waitlist now. And actually, we had families say they were on vacation, and so, we had to wait a few days to make sure that we weren't giving away seats, but we have, we're calling off, or calling in families now. So, we can take comfortably about 100, and I think we said 60 we were comfortable with with our staffing.
That's between all four schools?
At each of the Glen Oak, Harrison, and Thomas Jefferson.
Between those three schools?
Separately.
Separately?
Right.
100 each?
About 160.
Each?
Yes. We're over at Glen Oak, but we, oh, no, not 160 more, max. Yes. Max, sorry.
Okay. My next question-
And then, we're having, just so you know, too, when they call in to ask about that, we're having them call the sites directly so they can immediately-
That was my next question.
Yeah. So, they can immediately get in.
Okay. Now, it's, it's not just the children- Now, it's not just the children that are on the waiting list, is it, that you are accepting? Can parents now get their kids in?
They're calling, they can sign up, but we're still going down the waiting list.
The waiting list first, gotcha. Okay, well, thank you very much.
Sure.
I believe you had your answer.
Well, thank you for your presentation first. The questions that I got from parents were on the selection process itself. So going forward, I think it would be helpful if there was some clarity on how students are selected, be it academic need versus first come, first served. That was the feedback that I got.
Right. We did the first come, first served this year, but we also encouraged, had the schools encourage students to register.
Okay. Dr. Bob?
This actually might relate to what Mr. Shawd mentioned, and the question I would have is, how are you tracking these kids? And how long are you tracking them? And what are the goals or outcomes that you're tracking them for? And to the extent that it's first come, first served, if one of those goals and outcomes is subsequent attendance and years and not dropping out and eventual graduation, which I hope that's part of what we're talking about, keeping in mind that if you have folks that are volunteering, they're going to go through school anyhow, as opposed to the folks who are in academic need, who might, what's the word I'm looking for, who might show a more significant change in school persistence and academic achievement. So how are you tracking them, and where are you headed with them?
Sure. Attendance is definitely one of those ways, but we use our MAP data for the longitudinal tracking. So we'll have those students' data from spring, we'll be able to look at their August, September data.
Great. You can disaggregate them and get that little pool, and you can...
It'll take a little while, but we, that's the best we can do at this point. I mean, we have kind of the formative data that we'll collect in the classroom, but that will be the best longitudinal data. Now, I hadn't planned on tracking them for years, but we can try to figure out how to do that as well.
Well, one of the things that we had mentioned earlier, and we were having conversations about this earlier, and the superintendent's literacy program is related to this, is that we know that kids have to do three things to get through school: read, read, and read.
That's right.
And summer reading loss, we know is cumulative. And so if we have said those things out loud, then we should follow through and say, "Okay, we're going to track our kids, because what we're doing is we're trying to prevent summer, you know, summer loss."
Yes.
So, oh, come on, you guys are, oh, and I love that you're going out and you're going into the community, and I think that is just like totally cool. I was just at a wedding at Wildlife Prairie Park. Oh, please tell me. Are you going to go to Wildlife Prairie?
They're on our call list. We have...
Are they on the call? And, you know, because of, they got the large animal enclosure, and they got the elks and the water buffalo, and they got the, you know, and, I mean, it's just, and I hadn't been there in so long, and I just went there several weeks, and it's just amazing, just for kids.
They're on our list. It's all about the loss and timing cost.
Oh, okay.
To get each child...
Last but not least, last but not least, I've been getting feedback that kids are in food crisis across the city, and I am so pleased that you're doing this and that kids can find good, healthy food, that it's, and this is the first time since I've lived in Peoria that I heard something like this. And so I couldn't be more pleased that you guys have initiatives that are addressing this thing, and good for you guys. I really appreciate that.
Ms. Kosik, you had another question?
Yes, I did have, I did have one more question. Are you seeing, in the population of the children that are attending the summer program, are you seeing a prevalence in grade, you know, the grade or the age group, that there are more of one age than the other? So where are you looking, where are your numbers at as far as the level, the grade levels of which the children that are participating?
Well, part of the comparative part that's a little difficult is our K-1, 2 had more seats than our 3-8. Our 3-8, we started 50 seats per school, we added 25 more seats. So our waitlist is in that 3-8, just because there's fewer seats there. But we saw really fast and good attendant sign up for that K-2, which is where Dr. Karat's focus is, to get them reading by third grade, so we were pleased to see that.
Thank you very much.
Just one. Go ahead.
Just to follow up on what Mrs. Kosik has, what is the breakdown, then, between the in-need schools and the other kids that sign up first come, first served? How's that break down?
Sure. I would say we had a bigger response out of the schools that feed into Thomas Jefferson, and that, I'm not going to remember all the schools right now, would be Heinz and Northmore and Keller Charter Oak. And then our second bigger group, our second place school was Glen Oak area, and that's fed by Lincoln and Franklin and Von Steubit, and then, and it's kind of the middle part of our city. And then Harrison has the lower attendance, and so we're already kind of problem-solving some things, maybe doing things differently next year.
Do you have raw numbers of the total?
You know, I don't have those with me, I'm sorry. I can get those for Dr. Karat to give you.
Thank you.
So you want raw numbers for what?
The kids that were in need, that were doing summer school versus the other ones that took it? I just wanted to see what the split was.
You know what? I did give you registration by school, Dr. Karat.
That's fine.
That way you can see kind of registration by school. That's initial, not after waitlist and such.
We have all sorts of data.
It's almost overwhelming.
Dr. Jenkins?
Yes.
You mentioned the community sites, and we did this last year, didn't we?
Yes. This is our fourth year, I believe.
Fourth year, yeah. I wasn't sure how we tracked that, because many of the sites you have here already have programs for...
They have programs, but they don't have meals.
Well, a lot of them do have meals, but I'm saying, how do we, how do we know that the meals that we're providing are on top of what they, what they provide?
Mark's in the audience, too, but one of the things that we know is if they have their own program, we don't duplicate services. So if we're working with a site and they then begin to have their own, then we move, and they come to us. I mean, when we first started, it was we went out and we had to track them. Now they come to us and say, "When are you starting?" So that's pretty much the way that works now.
And in addition to that, what do young people have to do to get the meal? Do they have to go through some kind of...
No, anyone under 18 is able to receive those meals, and you notice on your sheet it says open sites or closed sites. So if the students are a part of the program, they don't have to do anything except show up and, you know, get counted and be under 18. Anybody over 18 then still needs to pay, but it's still a nominal fee. And so if it's an open site, then that means also community people can come in and have meals, even if they're not a part of that program. So if you're at the neighborhood house, you can still show up and get a meal if it's an open site.
Okay. And of course, our food service is tracking all that.
Oh, absolutely. We have to, we have to take attendance and keep track of how much we give at each site.
Thank you. Any other questions on this team? Any other comments? Thank you all. May I have the approval of minutes from May 8th and May 22nd, 2017?
Summude.
Second.
Please call.
Pastor.
Pastor Davis and the others.
Yes.
Mr. Shaw.
Aye.
Mr. Walsh.
Aye.
Mr. Adlin.
Aye.
Mrs. Ross.
Aye.
We are now at the place on our agenda that provides an opportunity for the members of the community who wish to address the Board. As you know, we are all volunteers elected to oversee the development, implementation, and maintenance of the quality education for our students of Peoria Public Schools. The Board comes, welcomes your comments and suggestions relating to this goal. Recognizing that we all have our First Amendment rights of free speech, we ask that your comments be focused on those issues within the Board's authority. There are some issues we are not at liberty to discuss in public, such as personnel and other executive session topics. However, if you have a personal or specific concern that needs to be addressed, we will get a staff person to help you. In addition, the Board members have, are accessible by, outside of these meetings, by, our phone numbers and emails are listed on our website. We also have a, okay, we realize that five minutes may not be enough time for some of you to express your thoughts, so we have installed a comment box for your convenience. Our Board Secretary will collect those comments after each Board meeting and compile and share those with the superintendent and the Board. When you are recognized, please come to the podium and state your name for our records. Each speaker has five minutes, and no one under age 18 may address the Board unless accompanied by a parent, guardian, or a teacher without the consent of the majority of the Board. Our first speaker is Mr. Terry Knapp.
Yes, I'd like to thank the Board and Dr. Karat, especially for recognizing the alumni associations. I know Central was here a month or so ago, and Woodruff was here last month, or two weeks ago, I guess, and I had to be in Florida at the beach. I really missed it. But I would like to say that, you know, it's very important that you understand, and I really don't think you have had an appreciation until you had these people come and speak to you, that, you know, these alumni associations have given hundreds of thousands of dollars just in the last 10 years, going back before that, probably into millions of dollars. I know that they probably told you this last time, but I'll repeat it. We gave seven $2,000 scholarships to students from Woodruff. I sat in on the scholarship application readings, and we recognized 10 out of 28 applicants with $500 scholarships, some were from Manuel, some were from Central, and some were for Richwoods, that are attending the Woodruff Career Academy. We really appreciate doing that. We also gave 10 $250 grants to people that are going into the trades or whatever. It's important they understand that's over $20,000. That's a significant amount of money that children don't have to borrow and have student loans for, you know, and you need to have an appreciation of the fact that these schools, high school alumni associations, are very willing to do this, are very willing to partner. I'd like to say about summer school, you're to be congratulated on summer school and improving summer school. Past administrations have simply let summer school go by the wayside. And Dr. Karat, you deserve a lot of credit for getting your staff to re-implement, re-up, if you will, summer school. I think you found that the demand is there. People want summer school in Peoria. We've talked about year-round school and the Valeska Hinton model. Forget the Valeska Hinton model. You need nine months of school, and you need at least two months of summer school. You need to increase the amount of availability. It used to be that Woodruff High School was the place for summer school. I think Manuel probably was at one time, but the whole school was full of high school students taking classes. Grade school, and this Sharon Karat is going to speak about this, um, excuse me, Sharon Cruz is going to speak about this. This is one of her pet peeves, and she has spoke about this many, many times, and she will continue to speak on this. She used to teach summer school to high school students. It's very important you understand that students want this availability. I think you see the demand, people calling. You know, I tried to call, and they referred me to the three, the three grade schools that are teaching summer school. You have a need. Children want, they thirst for this. You talk about your reading programs in the summer, this is where they can get that. Very important that you understand that. Very important, again, that you understand the commitment of the alumni associations. I would like to make one announcement. The 80th year anniversary of Woodruff High School is, there's going to be an event at Woodruff on September 9th, on Saturday, September 9th, and it will be from 1 until 3:30. And all the Woodruff Alumni Association members are being invited to that. It will be held at Woodruff. I'm sure there'll be tours of the building. I hope you can make it. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Sharon Cruz?
I recently wrote a FOIA request asking for attendance records for all 3rd, 5th, and 7th graders for 2016 and 17, and I can't get my oxygen tank to behave, there we go, to show how many days each student was absent and whether the absences were excused, unexcused, or due to suspensions, or for some other reason. I asked to coordinate these attendance records with an account of which students did or did not pass to the next grade. Because teachers have no choice but to repeat material to help absentees catch up, I do believe parents have a right to know the extent to which absentees in their children's classes slow the progress of learning. If students returning from absences do not receive this attention, they will take up even more learning time by creating discipline problems. Even though there has been significant good news about improved attendance, I have little doubt that there is still enough significant chronic absenteeism to slow teaching and learning considerably. Do you, as Board members, consider this data to be relevant and of interest to you? Does the administration give you such data on a regular basis for each student, each grade, each school, et cetera? Do you believe teachers, parents, and the community have a right to have access to this data? I assume you understand that most of the data that you receive is raw data, which is defined as data that has not been processed for use. Raw data is what I get through my FOIA requests. For several years now, I have requested raw data on many topics. That raw data doesn't do me or you much good in the form in which I receive it. I can't download the data and then put it on in a more meaningful order. For instance, in this case, from the student with the most absences to the student with the fewest absences. Unfortunately, I mean, understandably, I'm sorry, I should not be allowed to tamper with the data. Therefore, to make the data usable for me, I spend many, many hours re-entering all the data into my computer before I can put it in the order that allows for conclusions to be drawn. I willingly spend my time working with the data. Of course, we have to pay to obtain the data at a rate of 15 cents per page. More often than not, Terry pays for the data that I request. However, for this particular request, there are 1,496 pages at a cost of $216. The data has been collected but not run off yet. I am here tonight with, begging for you to give me this data. You can, I'll give time for you to laugh, okay? Of course, I would pay for three reams of paper that would be required. Please remember that the news would be very good or bad or both. If good, you can certainly take credit. If bad, you can inform parents how much work is to be done and list their help. Of course, you do not need me at all, but you do need the data. Staff at the boardrooms could more easily organize data in meaningful ways and put it on your website, and it must be both the good and the bad. In fact, organizing data in-house is the best idea. Also, college students working on their masters could well be interested in working on these projects, as well as the alumni project that I have suggested. Thank you for your consideration. While I am sure there is value in offering summer school to primary and middle school students, and pleased to see how many students wanted this opportunity, I know you'll not be surprised that I do not believe that this effort replaces high school summer school that offers all required subjects to Peoria Public School students and students from surrounding area schools. Also, how did you find money for K-8 summer school, but you can't find it for high school? Thank you.
Mr. Sivino Sierra?
I got a few gripes. One of them is that when I hear that they're overcrowded at Glen Oak School... One of them is that when I hear that they're overcrowded at Glen Oak School, you have to do something about it, you know, just don't let it keep going, even if you have to build more building there or move some of the students to another school. If you can build, you do like you did at Old Ting School, you got a mobile home for some of the classrooms, and you, you people, you do things like trying this solar power when you can't even repair the shortcomings in some of the older buildings, like Manuel. They need more restrooms. They need that parking lot repaired and improved, you know, and that's not, oh, we'll get it later. That, we need that now, you know, but you're too busy with these other schools, some of the more elite, and that's, that's not right. And I, you know, you're always trying to save money, you know. I believe some of these trips that some of you board members make, they could be forgotten, you know, it doesn't do any good. I don't see that much improvement when some of you members go to these conventions and what have you. You come back and same old member, you know, and we have to, we have to worry about taking care of our buildings because otherwise they'll be, I'll be bunching up like right now. You got roofing repairs in different schools, you got new doors to put up, and all kinds of stuff. I haven't been around like I used to go visit the schools, and I give you a lot of reports, you know, but you've never done anything about them, and now when they start collecting all together, you know, you, I think you seem lost in really what's important in our district. And so I want you, you know, forget these trips, you know, put your, put your minds together and use common sense, what this district needs. It doesn't need all that extra spending or new things you want to try, and like I say, on the more elite schools, you know. Our Manuel School is really something, you know, we got good students down there, we got good teachers, but our buildings need a lot of upkeeps. And so I tell you, I want you to take care of Glen Oak too, that, don't, don't let it get crowded again, and get some good teachers, more teachers there if need be, and I'll come back, I won't have to complain so much. And also, this cartoon, if you want to call, this drawing, you only got the Afro and the, and the white student there, you don't have an Asian, you don't have a European, you don't have Hispanic, you know. If you're gonna, if you're gonna promote our children, you gotta get them all. If you're gonna do some drawings, do it right, not just two classes, and we'll be a lot better off, you know, and, and human relations, whatever have you. So I'm not gonna talk too much more, but I will get back to you. I'm getting older, you know, and it gets harder for me to even walk sometimes, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna be honest till we get a little better with our business of this school district, 150. And what do you know, I got, I got the ringer.
Thank you, Mr. Sierra.
And this, the chair should take advantage of that microphone better, you know, get up to it closer. Thank you.
Ms. Shawna Reina?
Thank you for the opportunity to again express our concerns. Please let us begin by clearing up some misconceptions associated with our speaking out against the Glen Oak grade expansion. First off, we want to make our intentions crystal clear. We are voicing these concerns for the voiceless. The students we care for and serve are the ones that are taking the hit for this change. Their safety and quality of education is getting severely compromised, and they don't get a say or a word about it, nor do the families. They, did they ask any parents what they thought about the change? And did they provide the hard facts about what a Glen Oak K8 building would look like? Second, our concerns have not been adequately addressed, as stated in the media by the superintendent, as superintendent. She has trusted that Dr. Jenkins checked each of our concerns off the list, but Dr. Jenkins has not. The issues that we previously brought to the board are still left unanswered. The most pressing question we had at this time, and that we generally continue to wonder, is why? Why are we cramming over 930 student bodies into a school space designed and coded for 650, especially when we have two viable buildings in which to comfortably expand? Last spring, when walkthroughs were being conducted, our fire department posted signs mandating maximum body capacity were removed. They have not been replaced. Why were they removed and why are they not back up? It was an official document stating how many students we could safely house, and it was, has gone missing. We know that we are not the only building in the district struggling with challenging students and diminishing resources, but why are we getting so many students and so few resources? In 2012, Glen Oak was closed to enrollment not even a month into the school year. A letter went out in September 2012 to parents stating that at this time Glen Oak Community Learning Center has reached its maximum capacity and will no longer be able to enroll any students. Glen Oak student enrollment at the time was around 850 students. Also during this time, Glen Oak had five full-time building monitors, three assistant principals, and a school resource officer. The student enrollment for Glen Oak continues to increase. The latest student enrollment member, numbers being thrown around is now around 937 with at least 10 boundary waivers being considered. We are being asked to continue providing a quality education to these students at a school that will be over capacity by at least 284 students, with only two part-time building monitors and two assistant principals, along with no room for an in-school suspension area. Let us take a moment to highlight the difficult position this lack of space will put us in. SB 100 regulates the out-of-school suspensions that any given student can receive. Therefore, when a student is displaying significantly disruptive behaviors that are impending the learning going on in the classroom, they are removed. There is nowhere for them to go. We were recently encouraged at the June 1st collaborative meeting to develop a reflection room for students that were displaying behaviors incompatible with classroom expectations. The idea was that the student could go to this place, the space, cool down, process their choices, and return to the classroom. We cannot provide this opportunity because every single available room is taken for a classroom. This means that the disruptive behaviors will go right back into the classroom and stop the learning process for all. We would also like to point out that what the grade expansion is doing to the bilingual students. Their classrooms are forced into the interventionist office. These spaces were not by any means intended for classroom use, but will be by fitting 20-plus students in there per lack of available space elsewhere. This year was the first time Glen, the first time Lincoln passed Glen Oak in student enrollment. They had roughly 40 more students than Glen Oak. At Lincoln, they have several elite staff, three assistant principals, and one SRO. This year, we are projected to have well over Lincoln's enrollment and yet have not been offered any additional support staff or administrators. More children equal more need for support, and in the past, to ask was to receive. Our principal was supported by a full-time counselor, full-time school-based social worker, three assistant principals, several building monitors, a knowledgeable interventionist team, and an SRO. And we saw our discipline data steadily improve. Our team has been approached...
Thank you, Ms. Reina. Next is Ms. Annie Mayo.
Hello, Annie Mayo, school counselor. Where Shawna left off, our team was approached by both Maureen Langhoff and Derek Booth to train other teams in the district. We worked hard to develop our PBIS and RTI systems and were given adequate support to do so. We were steadily gaining ground and decreasing our office discipline referrals concerning aggression and physical fighting. Our building became less chaotic and student compliance increased. We had tight procedures and our systems were able to function effectively, and the students were the ones benefiting. However, just by adding a grade level and losing administrators, we have seen our discipline improvement decline. The solution would be to lose some students. We point to the example of Harrison. They have now been restructured into a K6 building, and the seventh and eighth grade students were placed elsewhere, presumably to avoid overcrowding and offer better support all around. We are again genuinely perplexed. Why? Why are we shoving more trauma-soaked children into a too-tight space with less support for them? We keep hearing of the superintendent's desire to develop a district-wide SEL platform, which we admire and are supportive of, but everything about this plan goes against social emotional support best practices. She is touted as the MTSS as the answer to all of our concerns, but we received the documents. The MTSS framework is exactly what we have already had in place for several years. We have binders in our building from years ago with all the same flow charts, graphics, and charts. MTSS is this administration's rebranding of PBIS and RTI. It is literally the same framework. Our personal team at Glen Oak was doing so well that at the end of last year, we were ready to finally roll out into our Tier Three plan. At this past June 1st collaborative meeting, we were asked to develop a matrix. For those of you unfamiliar with PBIS, that is the most basic, very first step of PBIS. We have taken a huge step backwards, which is why we do not blame Martha Ross for the removal of her two grandchildren from Glen Oak. We got the news that they are now slated to attend Christ Lutheran School in the fall. Unfortunately, many of our parents simply do not have that option. Students with disabilities make up 16.3% of our district's population, according to the current Illinois report card. Resource support was outlined in a presentation to the ISBE but is fairly uncommon within Peoria District 150. With the overcrowded nature at Glen Oak, special educators do not have a place in which to pull children that require resource support of any kind. Because of this, special educators are unable to ride in resource minutes and are generally told not to for those students that need that support, thus placing us in a non-compliance state, opening us up for legal implications. The only options currently available to students with disabilities are inclusion, are self-contained special education. Federal regulation states it is not legal to provide students with disabilities the services that are within the parameters of what the district has to offer, but that the students with disabilities be provided the services they need in compliance with FAP. And a frequently asked questions section on the rights law website it states, "Under idea, lack of adequate personnel or resources does not relieve a school district of their obligations to make free and appropriate public education available to each disabled student in the least restrictive educational setting in which his or her IEP can be implemented. It is our ethical, legal, and moral duty to provide our students with disabilities the services and placement options necessary to allow them the FAP they are allowed by law." There seems to be a pattern emerging from administration to administration, promising one thing and doing another. The mistrust the Glen Oak community has toward the school district is not new. Eight years ago, the community was sold on a plan called the Glen Oak Project. This 28 and a half million dollar project was intended to bring 21st century learning to the East Bluff, per the project's purpose. The old GO was supposed to be replaced with a new birth through eighth-grade Community Learning Center with the capacity for between 650 to 750 students. Its design attributes were to include space to support strong family partnerships, spaces that could be shared by multiple groups, a safe and secure, welcoming environment, physical flexibility in classrooms and other spaces, clustering of classrooms to create small learning communities, resources in close proximity, and flexible technology to allow changes in the future. Due to the increased population at GO, we are unable to fulfill the promises the community was given, and unfortunately, our parent population already has a deep well of mistrust established toward institutions of power. One of the reasons we have such difficulties developing and maintaining parent-school relationships, and with moves like these, how can we blame them? Last year, when district administration was trying to get the restructuring plan approved, the public and the school employees were told once more that GO would be receiving less students. On March 8th, 2016, the superintendent was quoted saying Glen Oak would have fewer students, not more. Also, the district spokesman Chris Copeland was quoted saying enrollment would actually decrease from its current 856 students to 770. Again, the public was told one thing and was given something else. Glen Oak was down in enrollment. At the end of the year, GO had 800...
Thank you, Ms. Mayo. I have an additional card I'll need the board's approval on because of the fact that anyone wishing to speak should have their cards in by, by the beginning of the, of the open session, which is 6:30. And we had one person come in afterwards and just fill out a card somewhere around, I don't know what time. So can I have a consensus from the board to hear this last one? Mr. Dr. Bob?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Coste? Okay. Mr. Carlos Evans?
Thank you so much to the board for allowing this time. Sorry I was late, taking care of the six-month-old baby. Now, at the end of GO, at the end of the year, GO had 807 students, which was down 51 students, but it slid to have 937 students next year. This would be an increase of 167 more students than, than what Mr. Copeland said Glen Oak would have. The superintendent stated, "The reconfiguration plan's main goal is to use space more efficiently throughout the district." This just does not seem to be the case. We have schools nowhere near capacity and other schools overcrowded. As of Friday, Vaughn Stube's student enrollment was well below 300 students. How is this meeting the main goal of the restructuring? How are we using space efficiently to cram 937 high-need bodies into too-tight spaces? But right down, but right down the road, have less than a third the amount of students in a spacious building. We are sincerely seeking answers and are left wondering, is it Glen Oak? Have we somehow offended the superintendent and/or board? It may not be intentional, but it is appearing to be very punitive to pile on students and strip resources. Again, we want to know why. Because of what is happening to these kids, it's not okay. We appreciate all the support from the community, our parents, and those board members who are open to these, the things that we've communicated. Thank you and have a great night.
Is there any response to what the audience presentations? Any response to Dr. Karat? Okay, go ahead, go ahead.
Actually, I'd want to hear Dr. Karat.
Well, why don't you go ahead? You had your hand up.
Well, because we might be informed by something I don't know.
I'll start with Mr. Knapp. Thank you, Mr. Knapp, for basically sharing the idea regarding the recognition of the alumni. I thought that was a great idea, and we're always open to ideas and suggestions from the community, and you came up with a great, great one, and thus the recognition of the three groups, Woodruff and Peoria High and Manuel, and you're right, they do so much, they give back, they work really hard to collect and fundraise to provide scholarship dollars for, for young people. You mentioned the 20 grand that was given about a month or so ago, and Saturday Manuel gave quite a bit of scholarships, and it's the same thing for Peoria High also, so great idea, thank you. Ms. Cruz, you mentioned the attendance, and actually while you were talking, I was just thinking, we have someone who's actually doing that work. I would love to connect you with Dr. Simpson, so you wouldn't actually even need paper, you shouldn't have to pay the $200, and you can have access to the data, because I believe he has all that data, Dr. Simpson, Mrs. San Philip, and then you can take it, you can drill down further, because we do that on a monthly basis. So if anything, let's, let's connect the three of you and see if they have... and so then we can, you can kind of play around and sort of explore and investigate what you have in mind to share with us. So, and then summer school, Susan, Ms. Cruz asked, how are we able to pay for it? I know we're using Title I dollars, Title II. Where, Susan?
Title I.
Just Title, yeah, Title II is for professional development. Yeah, and the focus is on K-8, right?
We have high school recovery.
Right.
Yeah.
Right.
Recovery of high school.
That's not her favorite thing, though.
Well, we are trying to highlight Dr. Carr's share of the teacher-to-student program.
Right. Did you hear that one, Ms. Cruz? Some of the things that we...
I'm going to be hearing aid, too, if you don't mind.
So, Ms. G, can you?
My interpreter will tell me what you said.
Oh, okay. All right. So, we're moving in that direction, and fund is, costs is sort of the challenge. And then, in reference to Glen Oak, you know, all I'll say is, I think a good example was what happened with summer school, where, you know, people responded, and then people were caught off because of over-enrollment, and folks did not respond, and then you ended up having this void, and you have to sort of, you know, go back and call folks on the waiting list. And so, and so with Glen Oak, what I have said to the team, and I'm committed to Glen Oak, this is their schedule to have, really, we're asking them to keep the seventh graders, the seventh graders are the rising eighth graders, and it's a good problem to have, actually, in terms of over enrollment or increased enrollment, because as a state, people are leaving. We've had a time when folks left our district where this is a resurgence for us, so this is a very, very good problem. I'm committed to monitoring those numbers and making adjustments if necessary. We have, we have, actually, when I came in in 2015, Glen Oak was slated to have two administrators, and I kept, they took an administrator, an assistant principal away, I put that assistant principal back. We have our campus security officers located there. There should be a campus security officer there. So, I'm committed to providing support. We have to see how this thing shakes out, and down the road, the next step is to, we talked about looking at the boundaries, that's something we have not done for over twenty years. I said we're committed to that, so I, you know, I will continue to focus on doing my job, and I'm confident with the plan that we have for Glen Oak, and I'm also, I will be monitoring it aggressively to make sure that everything works out as it's supposed to. We're not accepting any more, and Mr. Copeland knows this, any more boundary waiver kids. So, you'll hear things flying, you know, just flying, and that's kind of a little disappointing to me with, you know, items that are not necessarily accurate, but we're not, Glen Oak will not accept any more boundary waiver kids, and also homeless students, that typically the normal process will not be placed at Glen Oak. But again, I guess the key point is those enrollment numbers and the actual attendance and students butts in the seat, this is what we call it, butts in the seat, will be monitored, and if adjustments are needed, adjustments will be made. I would say to the teachers, continue to focus, there are a number of great folks over at Glen Oak. I want you guys to be focused on the right things, focus on your SEL plan, focus on your professional development plan. I want to see that teacher efficacy, that's the number-one thing, where we believe what we do will make a difference for our students, and work with us, work with the district, let us know what you need. We will monitor those numbers, and if adjustments are to be made, adjustments will be made.
Thank you, and I'm glad I waited, especially Dr. Demilon Carrad. I appreciate the last comment, several comments we will monitor aggressively, and if changes need to be made, we will make them. I would respectfully request that you reconsider some of the items that I heard. For example, if we were able to move folks at Harrison, and there was no negative outcome of that, if that practice would not necessarily become something that we do all the time, because I'm one of the first ones who have said it, moving kids around out of Woodruff, I wasn't sure that that was going to help. So, I'm not going to double-speak myself. That being said, if that practice is something that can help this school, I simply respectfully request that you continue to consider that as part of your aggressive monitoring.
And Dr. B, that's just some quick background. It was before you came on board, it was part of the grand reconfiguration plan, and Manuel, remember Manuel, had a much lower attendance, and so what happened to sort of balance and to feed, and we do this, we've been very creative, so we saw that and needed some adjustments. So, actually, we were creating a tight line to add numbers to Manuel, Manuel's school, and so that was that discussion we had two years ago, implemented last year, and will continue to do that. There is a need, there is a need to look at our boundaries, that's something that we have talked about as a team, and that will be a piece that we'll be looking at, another project once we put some closure on. So, that's something that's coming, upcoming.
Terrific. I think boundaries are really important, whether you're a school district or a person. As regards, another respectful thing to look at would be to aggressively monitor what the possible impact is of the numbers as anticipated. For example, we just had actually a very fine report on discipline rate. I would be concerned that if we saw spikes in areas that we have already designated as actually going down district-wide, that that would mean that Glen Oak would be an anomaly. I understand that there, as I heard you, that there was, there's extra campus security there. My concern is that they're not educators, they're security, and they wouldn't take the place of an administrator or another trained educator who would ask us support. So, I wouldn't, I wouldn't, I would respectfully not look at those as interchangeable.
It was just referenced that there was one that was leaving, so I just wanted to show equity also. That was...
Well, I was hoping for equity in terms of educational professionals is where I was headed with that. I would hope, again, and if I'm, as apparently I frequently am ill-informed on these things, forgive me, but I would like to see our ESL students have virtually the same classroom that any other student does in the district, or know the reason why. I can't be any more clear than that, and I would respectfully ask that I have evidence of that, please. As regards, the other terms of aggressive monitoring, to take a Genusian viewpoint of this, if I would, we're focusing on the numbers going up. The question then becomes, as was alluded to earlier, are their families removing their children from Glen Oak? And if so, why? Ms. Cruz? Ms. Cruz?
Yes.
In terms of the names, I can simply say share and share alike.
Okay.
Oh, come on!
That's good.
I was building up for that. Oh, one last thing, and this is really not funny. This is an apology to Los Señores Sierra, Los Dos. Because I mispronounced your name, I called you Serrano, which is a Chile, it's not a Sierra. There's a big difference, and so if you would please accept, perdóname, accept my humble apologies for mispronouncing your names. Having names correct, todos sabemos es muy importante to some of us. And if I may make another respectful request regarding, and this is probably the third or fourth or maybe even fifth time I've heard Señor Sierra make this comment, and apparently it's falling upon deaf ears. If that cartoon is offensive to one person, then maybe we should take a look at it, and maybe the way that we can manage our diversity, we can find a better way to exemplify our diversity rather than stick figures. That's cute, and that's nice, but it has at least offended one person, don't know how many others, who may not have spoken up. I do not find it particularly useful in defining our diversity, and we're very, very good at managing such things, I think. And so, publicly available graphics that, and we could have some very smart folks that we can, I think, task with this, publicly available photographs and graphics and stock that would more accurately show the diversity that we have, and not just in our race and ethnicity, but perhaps our little brothers and sisters who are mobility impaired or have disabilities would be nice.
Hey, Dr. Jenkins, I want you to respond to any feedback regarding the ELL classroom.
Yes, I'm not aware of the ELL being any...
Intervention as well, yeah.
We use that as a small, like we do for any of the special education students, we use small rooms for pullouts.
Right.
But they have their, maybe move those classrooms. So, if they're moved, I'll have to verify that.
Thank you.
Mr. Wither?
Yeah, in response, first of all, to Mr. Knapp, and I think your suggestion for recognizing alumni was valuable, we've done that, and I think the alumni have all helped. I don't think we've recognized in the past the amount of services that they've done for the district, because Peoria High alumni have been a longstanding club, but Peoria Woodruff has done a really good job, too, and so has Manuel, so I'm appreciative of that idea, I think was a good idea. Mr. Sierra, Mr. Willis and I would like to assure you, the Manuel High School has not been forgotten in the upgrades that we're doing. We've got a new roof going in, we've got other projects that are targeted there. They all haven't been made as public, but, you know, doesn't hurt for you to remind us about that, but we have not forgotten you. There's been, Mr. Willis, any other comments about that?
Actually, the parking lot was just done in the last week. The spaces, parking space has been resealed, repairs have been made, parking, new parking spaces have been painted. I mean, I got a, the architect traveled around and took some pictures of some of those things, and Manuel's one of the first ones that we've done this summer, and it looks great.
We just want to know that we do listen here sometimes. As far as the Glen Oak situation, my esteemed friend Ernestine and I had a little bit of a discussion. Ernestine Jackson last time on, there would be a report from the superintendent, and I said you basically heard the report, and that's basically what it is, there hasn't been a change in what we're doing. And I'd ask a question, and maybe it was viewed as rhetorical for Mrs. Jenkins and for the superintendent, but my question was, if you have troubles with discipline and your scoring's at two percent with eight hundred kids, how does adding a hundred and ten kids help that school with no support in discipline? You don't have a room that kids can go to, and we've talked about that, and that's one of the ideas in the social-emotional, is that you've got a place for in-school suspensions or in place that you can go. If you don't have that availability, you know, how is adding another hundred and some kids going to make that situation better? It's not a rhetorical question. I don't understand how we're doing this. I appreciate the staff coming here, and I think their concern has been about the kids, and, you know, what's going to go on, and I think that should be our concern. I've been told that by many other people here, besides the fact I've been called intrusive. I've also been told that we should be here about the kids, and I think we should be here about the kids, and I think what we've heard today was that we've got a faculty group that cares about the kids. I don't think waiting another year is going to solve anything. I think we've got an overcrowding situation now, not only at Glen Oak, but I think Lincoln and some other schools, and I think we could address maybe both of those issues and help improve discipline and test scores. I'm one board member, and all I'm saying is I think we're waiting too long, if we had to wait for a year to see what's going to happen. So, like that.
Any other comments for...
Just, when I just listened to the comments and I heard about the maximum capacity, I just, if someone could speak to the maximum capacity of the actual official capacity of the building, I would appreciate it.
So, we have a representation from buildings and grounds, Mr. Myers, would you like to take that one? Did you hear the question?
Yes, based on the, based on code of the building, of the information that I've had received, it was based on nine hundred and fifteen students and sixty-one staff. Because they built the plumbing, plumbing code for residents are based on those numbers, so that's where they're probably, it's just an example, but the plumbing that was put in that building, for the information that I dug, is based on those figures.
Is that what the fire, the fire code is?
That's the code, that was the plumbing code capacity.
Okay, does fire code also count?
For...
For building accuracy? I mean, I interpret, the sign that Joe was seeing is, the fire marshal says you can put as many people here. It doesn't say the plumber says you can put as many people.
I don't know, I understand that, because you have, you have capacities for rooms, capacities for spaces, like a gym, cafeteria, etc. But the numbers that I had, that I have seen, reflect that number.
First of all, you know, we try not to operate on inaccuracies, and maybe I'm getting a message from someone who says that I'm taking my grandchildren out, who have been in that school since they were kindergarteners, and I'm quite disturbed by that, because I wouldn't have told anybody that. The only reason that they are still there is because they love it there, but I don't want them to be in a position that people are against them because of me. So, I'm disturbed by the fact that someone says that I'm going to take my kids out and put them in some other school, and everybody can't afford to do that. Well, neither can I, because I'm a senior citizen on Social Security, raising two kids. So, I'm not sure where that came from, but I'm going to be okay, but I am disturbed by that and the comments that people make in the paper about me, because I've always been here for the right reason, and that is for children and families, always. My track record shows that.
I guess the clarity is, I'm going to look at the fact of what is the true capacity of Glen Oak? How many children and adults can be in that school? That's what I'm looking for, how many? Because if, Mr. Myers, as you indicated, the plumbing code, but as one of, okay, said, the fire code, what the fire marshal says is this capacity can only be X, Y, Z, and that is it. That's the number I'm looking for, is what the total capacity is for the children and that can attend, that can be enrolled in that school on a daily basis. How many children does that school hold? That's what I'm looking for.
Well, that's something we can ask the superintendent to bring back if we need to, but he indicated that each room has capacity.
Well, every room, every room does, but there is a capacity that a building can take. That's what I'm, that I'm interested in. So, if it said nine hundred and thirty-seven, a capacity of nine hundred and thirty-seven, I don't have a problem with it. If it says nine hundred and fifteen and we're looking at nine hundred and thirty-seven, then I have a problem, because we're putting children at risk. I mean, I'm just, I just like to know what the capacity is and then move forward from there.
Well, it was a point that was just made when I brought up the plumbing, plumbing code, because that is the true number, because if you know that the fire code...
Dave, can you come closer to the microphone, please?
Dave, can you come closer to the microphone, please?
Why isn't that just a question they need to bring back? Right. Because we need to...
Well, there's one right there. There's one really good.
All right. So when they talk about fire code, Architect made a good point, because those capacities, when I talk to you about spaces, when it comes to fire code, those, those numbers would actually be bigger than what I, when I mentioned the plumbing code. That would be the true number, because fire codes would actually be a higher capacity number overall, because you're not just talking about capacities in all the classrooms, you're talking about capacities for, for the building was in use, say, the gym having numbers in, the cafeteria, classrooms, and other spaces. So that number actually would be higher when it comes to a fire code. So the plumbing code numbers are the true number of the capacity of the building, based on that. If that makes sense.
And what happens, you have these, just like summer school, you have these large numbers, and then when folks show up, you know, the actual butts in the seats, they're significantly lower. And so that's why I've consistently, and I will continue to say that, we will aggressively monitor the numbers. We've already put things in place where traditionally boundary waiver kids, homeless kids, you know, based on location and attendance, are, are placed in schools based on, on those traditional procedures, and we've already said, hey, this, this is stopped, and this is on hold for Glen Oak, and that's on hold for Glen Oak, and we will continue to monitor the actual enrollment and butts in the seats. So we, we, we know our limitations.
And I'm not trying to be obstructionist here, can you just, I think a good...
Just, just, can we...
I think a good conversation with the ROE and a fire marshal, as early as tomorrow, would be...
That's all I'm asking for, can we just find out? You know, if it's more, it's more, if it's not, it's not.
And I was going to mention that...
Let's not, let's not play ping pong and not answer the question. Mrs. Kostic, thank you very much. I think the issue, let's just get the question answered.
That's right. And if I can, the question too is, if we can get 900 kids in there, but we have other school spaces that we can do to make it academically better at Glen Oak and Lincoln, let's look at that too. The fact that we can cram 900 kids into one building, is that the best educational option for the kids? And that's the other question I think needs to be answered. Yeah, if we can do, if we can cram them all in, and we can get Mazol oil at all their shoulders and squeeze them all in so they can do that, we don't have a breakout room, we don't have any of these other rooms are doing, PE classes are going to be very limited, we don't go outside for that right now, this isn't the best educational environment. And I don't think that's an irresponsible question to ask. I don't think we're putting these kids in the best educational environment, and I think we should look at that answer too.[783.32][783.32][applause]
Yeah, I was just gonna, to add that I, I do think that the, the general question of do we have our buildings properly balanced, you know? We have, we have a set amount of capacity, and certainly some buildings are, you know, much more crowded than others. I think that's totally a fair thing to point out, and I think it's something we have to look at. What I see, you know, this conversation specifically about next year as the culmination of a two-year, the second year of the, you know, restructuring proposal coming to a head, and, you know, the question is, is do you, you know, do we allow the superintendent or team to go ahead and implement the second year of the plan, you know, and monitor and make adjustments based upon what we agreed to last year? Or do we try to shake the deck now? I think we'd be in a much better position next year to look at a broader realignment of, of buildings, rather than trying to do this as everyone is already gone.
Yeah, and that was the plan, that was part of the reconfiguration plan, implemented, get some, get things stabilized, and then kick in the, the boundary, which is a big job in and of itself, the boundary committee and, and reconfiguration of boundaries. That's a huge job.
Did you have something else?
Yes, one last thing to say. I don't think, I don't think anybody's suggesting shake the deck. I think what I'm suggesting, and what I liked hearing from the superintendent, is an aggressive look at this and a measure of professional educator agility.
That's great.
We remain agile. Plans that cannot be agile aren't useful to anybody. So the implementation of the plan, I get it, and I know that you need to do what you have to do, but I also think that we're bright enough and, and we have enough forethought and we're good enough to be agile while we're doing it.
Anything else from any board member? At this time, our, our guest of honor have been very patient, and I'd like to recognize our student board members who served last year and served well. Dr. Carr, do you want to... Thank you. Elizabeth Lindquist didn't be with us tonight, so we're going to mail her this, but Alasia Bates and Mr. Alex Sierra are here with us, and we'd like to... And thank you for your commitment to learning this whole process of government affairs. Dr. Carr has a small token for you.
Yeah, you guys were amazing. We're proud of you. Alex, you're going to the University of Illinois. Alasia, you're attending Mizzou. We know you're going to do very well. Hopefully this experience was meaningful to you. You see, I have seven bosses, they're all very different, they're all very talented. Hopefully a key thing you, you took away was, I think Dr. Bob said it really well, being flexible, being agile, collaborating, listening, and also doing your homework, having some conviction about your plans, and then all the other things that we talked about. So actually, you have a nice plaque that says, "Alex Sierra, always remember the four agreements," by Don Miguel Ruiz.
You don't say "Puedes."
Come and say, "Dice." But it says, "Be in four things that I really like, I share it with everybody, and I try to live by it, and I wanted to share it with you also, the four agreements of life. It makes life a lot more, less stressful," and just wise words. Number one, be impeccable with your words, be impeccable with your words. Number two, don't take anything personally, and hopefully you've learned all these things as a student board member. Do not take anything personally. What I heard from my team at Glen Oak, their suggestions, I'm not taking it personally. I've committed to them, that I'm going to monitor those numbers aggressively, and adjustments needed to be, to be made, we will make them. Do I take their comments personally? No. Don't make any assumptions. That's a very good one. It's very hard and difficult for human beings to live by, and it's one that I also strive to do better in. Don't make assumptions, don't make assumptions. And then whatever you do, especially now that you're heading on to college, whatever you do, always do your very, very best. So those are four agreements that really does make a difference in life and will better position you to be very successful at whatever you decide to do. So congratulations, and we're proud of you, and good luck.[1147.51][1147.51][applause]
Don Miguel Ruiz.
Ruiz, Ruiz. Thank you.
Thank you. Is your mom here? Are the parents of these two individuals here? Did Mr. Sierra leave? He did? Okay.
I know when I came on the board, Superintendent Carrad asked if I had any new ideas I'd like to try, and it turned out it wasn't a new idea. Mrs. Ross had been an advocate for having students on here, and Dr. Carrad said, "I've already thought that would be a good idea." So I just wanted to thank, actually, you three, Miss Lindquist isn't here, but you were a wonderful addition for our first year of trying it. It was, I'm not saying a risk, because we had confidence in you as students, and you didn't let us down, so thank you for all you contributed.
They're school cohorts.
You are their first cohorts, that's right. Thank you.[1252.33][1252.33][applause]
One of the special things that you should remember is that you can always call on us, no matter where you are, so keep in touch, okay?
And put it on your resume also, some of you, you know, are part of your Vida, okay?
Oh, and you get to take your name tag with you.[1273.58][1273.58][laughter] Thank you.
Good idea.
Alasia, Mrs. Davison, could not be more pleased. See what happens when you have a good kindergarten teacher? Huh? See what happens when you got a good...
And a good principal, for both of them, actually. Whittier and Manuel.[1295.41][1295.41][laughter]
And, and Alex, I didn't have you in kindergarten, so good luck, pal.[1300.41][1300.41][laughter]
Other comments or, okay, thank you. Proposed expenditures over $2,500. Any questions on those proposed expenditures over $2,500?
I know.
Reports of requests under the Freedom of Information Act and the status of such requests. Dr. Ross?
I'm sitting in the basketball game, going to watch the basketball game.
You get to stay with us, so you can't watch the basketball game.[1342.66][1342.66][laughter]
Thank you, President Ross. Since our last board meeting on May 22nd, we received three new requests. Out of those three, two were filled. There were five pending requests noted on May 22nd, and all of those were filled. So to date, we have 30 requests for this calendar year for a cost of $8,478.70.
Thank you. That was our last meeting. This is just...
I know, I can't believe it.
Okay, consent agenda.
The consent agenda for this evening consists of the following items. Item number one, gifts to the school district this meeting, $835, year to date, $204,553.13. Item number two is the payment of bills. Item number three is payment for travel. Item four is a board travel request. Item five is a human resources report. Item six is adoption of policy 5:21, sexual misconduct. Item number seven is a field trip approval for the Peoria High School football team to Pella, Iowa. Item number eight is the student school board members for the 2017-2018 school year. Item nine is for custodial supplies. Item 10 is for office supplies. Item 11 is the re-roof project for Franklin, Heinz, and Sterling. Item 12 is the Sterling Round remodel. Item 13 is the health, life, safety amendment. Item 14 is temporary approval and payment of bills. Item number 15 is the approval of Title I plan for the Illinois State Board of Education. And item 16 is the solar power purchase agreement with HAWK, I'm not going to say the second name right, Atolo LLC. And that's the entirety of the consent agenda.
Are there any items on the consent agenda that any board member would like for separate vote? Not discussion, but separate vote. Yes, sir? The other items. May I have a motion and a second?
I move that we adopt the entire consent agenda with the exception of item four.
Second.
Thank you. Is there a discussion? I would first like to, on the number eight, just name the new student board members that are coming in. Attiana Douglas from Manuel Academy, Selena Ruffin from Peoria High School, and Mary Sherman from Richwoods High School will be joining us next year. Other comments or questions on any of the items other than number four? Okay. May I have a roll call, please?
Mrs. Kostic? Aye. Dr. Davison, if you will.
Aye.
Mr. Shaw?
Aye.
Mr. Walter?
Aye.
Mr. Adler?
Aye.
Mrs. Jones?
Aye.
Number four, may I have a motion, please?
I move that we adopt item four from the consent agenda.
Discussion?
Discussion was because Mrs. Ross and Mr. Adler had indicated earlier tonight that we were going to have a board retreat. I thought it would be best to hold off on this until after we have that retreat, because I think those priorities may be an item that we come up in the retreat. So that's all, I'm not asking for denial, I'm just asking to hold off on it until we have a retreat.
Any other comments or questions?
What's the decision we're making, then? We're still, it's still, the decision's not to hold off. The motion was to pass or not, correct?
Yes.
And what was the reason, what was the reason needed for this?
Well, we have, we, we found out just tonight that Mrs. Ross and Mr. Adler, and I agree with them, think that we should have a retreat for the full board, because I think this...
That hasn't been planned, though. That's just in our, you know, preparation stage, that hasn't been planned.
Okay. So then I guess you can okay this, but I just thought this was an item that should be subject of discussion at that retreat, so.
Mrs. Ross, do you, based upon what we've talked about, do you think that the, the retreat discussion that we'll have will impact your decision whether or not to go to conference?
No, not at all. It adds nothing, it's totally different.
But it may have an impact on whether we approve it. That's kind of what my point was.
I don't think so, but...
Apparently you don't, then you will both guess that, so.
I don't know why I would, but...
I think they're totally different from what we would be doing at the national versus what would take place in a retreat. Isn't that more view towards this board as a...
Board evaluation.
Evaluations and things. So I think that what, what would take place at, at the national, Mrs. Ross or anyone else that has attended a national, would, there are so many other areas that they could obtain information on, so many classes that can be attended, that I don't believe that would be covered under the, a retreat.
We don't anticipate to spend any amount of money on the retreat either. It's really just for board reflection and self-evaluation, so I don't see it impacting there as well.
Call for the vote?
Mrs. Kostic? Aye. Dr. Davison, if you will.
Aye.
Mr. Shaw?
Aye.
Mr. Walter?
No.
Mr. Adler?
Aye.
Mrs. Ross?
Aye.
By surprise, when they motion here.
Okay, where are we now?
Budget resolution.
Okay, budget resolution. The amendment budget, that the board, or if somebody wanted to make that motion? Anybody want to make that motion for me?
I move that the Board of Education approve the following resolution. Whereas the Board of Education of Peoria School District 150, County of Peoria, State of Illinois, caused to be prepared an amended budget, and the Secretary of the Board has made the same conveniently available to public inspection for at least 30 days prior to final action thereon. And whereas a public hearing was held to such a budget on the 12th day of June 2017, notice of said hearing was given at least 30 days prior heretofore, as required by law and all other legal requirements, and been complied with. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Education of said district as follows, that the amended budget containing an estimate of amounts available in each fund separately and the expenditures from each be in the same as hereby adopted as the budget of the school district for the 2016-2017 fiscal year. as the budget of the school district for the 2016-2017 fiscal year.
May I have a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion. Further questions on the budget? Discussions on the budget? May I have a vote, please?
Mrs. Coste? Aye. Dr. Davison, a deus?
Aye.
Mr. Shaw?
Aye.
Mr. Walter?
Aye.
Mr. Adler?
Aye.
Mrs. Ross? Aye.
Of presentations and suggestions by board members.
Board members and audience, does anybody know what today is? Oh, that's Monday.
Monday.
Anybody who's not a smart aleck? Today is Loving Day. On this day, thank you very much, Mr. Atkins Dutrow. On this, on this day, we celebrate June twelfth anniversary of the nineteen sixty-seven United States Supreme Court decision Loving v. Virginia, which struck down all anti-misogen- Miss, I knew I was going to pronounce it, miscegenation laws. In the remaining sixteen U.S. states, it was inspired by the day, and to recognize the day, was inspired by Juneteenth, which we know is June nineteenth, which is the recognition of the ending of slavery in the state of Texas. In addition, however, when it says struck down those laws in the remaining sixteen states, that means that there were states prior to the Supreme Court decision which struck these laws down. Back in nineteen fifty-nine, in my adopted hometown of Tucson, Arizona, I was actually born in Nogales, Arizona. But back in nineteen fifty-nine, a Japanese-American gentleman named Henry Oyama in Tucson, Arizona, had the temerity to fall in love with a white woman. Her name was Mary Ann Jordan. And it came to pass that the state of Arizona would not allow these two lovebirds. They got married in St. Augustine Cathedral, which I have tended many times as a child when I lived in Tucson. They got married and then were promptly got into problems because of the anti-miscegenation laws in Arizona, which they immediately turned around and sued the state and won. One of the prior states prior to Loving v. Virginia. Both of these events, I think, are very important for us as we contemplate the work we do in educating all children and including all families. And the recognition that racial discrimination still persists, that multiracial, biracial couples and families still face oppression despite the fact that we are where we are today. We should never rest. The other regrettable part about today is that today is the one-year anniversary of the Pulse massacre. Were forty, I want to get this correct.
Nine.
Is it forty-nine?
Forty-nine.
Forty-nine people died at the Pulse nightclub in Orlando. And again, as we recognize the plight of our LGBT, most of whom are LGBTQ, and recognize our own commitment to diversity, that such massacres should never, ever, ever happen again. And so today is a special day for many reasons, and I wanted us to recognize those. Thank you.
Thank you.
Minor suggestion on my part, and those of you that know me, I don't like to just talk for any reason. But in the last week, I had the unfortunate experience of reading the newspaper, and not because it's not a great publication, but because one of our local legislatures had suggested that perhaps in order to force enough pressure for the state to pass a budget, that all of our school districts should just, you know, not open in the fall. And I, I know all of our local legislators, and I even, in a drive-by, managed to meet the governor once. And I believe that honestly, they're, they have at least a vision in mind that's heartfelt and desiring of going in the right place. But I can think of nothing more shameful than the suggestion that we would all lay down on the railroad tracks in order to get them to sign a piece of paper to do what's right. And I, so, you know, I'm just one guy. But I got to tell you, next time I see somebody touting education as a poster child for the next campaign, before they pass a budget, I'm going to be there with a protest sign.
Other presentations, suggestions by board members? Report from board committees? Has any committees met? Have meetings coming up?
The Policy Committee will meet on the twenty-first, June twenty-first, at nine thirty a.m. So that is the third Wednesday.
Okay, thank you. Anything else?
I move that we adjourn.
Second.